Okay, we'll go ahead in 7:02. We'll convene the town of Kent's public hearing this evening, Thursday, September 18th, 2025, at 7:02 PM. And to discuss, notice is hereby given that the Kent Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 18th, 7:00 PM, at Kent Town Hall, 41 Creek, Green Bogart, to present information here, public tenant, on the following four ordinances, proposed ordinances. Town of Kent adopt the code of ordinance of the Town of Kent, Section 17-11, entitled "Restriction of Commercial Bus Travel." Second ordinance we'll discuss, proposed ordinance is Town of Kent adopt the code of ordinance of the Town of Kent, Section 17-10, entitled "Placement of Material in Public Right-Away." Third proposed ordinance will be Town of Kent adopt the code of ordinance of the Town of Kent, Section 2-17, entitled "Purchasing Ordinance." And fourth, Town of Kent adopt the code of ordinance of Town of Kent, Section 11-16, entitled "Regulation of Cannabis." There are pretty much, has not been seen going, and wants a copy of the ordinances and everything that's there for those playing at home. If you want to go on the website, you'll see the login for all the material that's on there, including all the proposed ordinances and so on, and so on. So let me just go over a couple of things tonight. Tonight, we're going to have our, the public hearing on all those four ordinances. And then immediately afterwards, we're going to keep the Zoom open. We will adjourn from the public hearing into a special board of selectmen meeting. It's a couple of things we need to do to set up for the two weeks, the town meeting, as well as some other material about proposing cannabis ordinance to the ballot for the November 4th election. That's some, we have some things the board has to do. I'll go over, just briefly go over each one of these in order. I don't know how many people we have at home, but we don't seem to have as many people here. But everyone will get a chance to speak, and since we have, you know, a little bit more room, if you have a second, you know, comment to make or observation, whatever, we'll swing back and get you in there as well. We'll start with the room here first, and then when we have some, you know, a pause, we'll go online and we'll, anyone at home, just raise your hand and let Lynn know that you do want to speak from home, and she will follow that online and we'll bring that in. And then when we're there, we'll come back here, see if there's comments, follow-up, and then back there, and then we'll tend to match it until we reach a satisfactory thing amount of time and comment on each one. So, okay, any questions so far? Okay, all right. The first ordinance which we're going to discuss this evening is Section 17-11 under streets and, or 17 under streets and sidewalks, the restriction of commercial bus travel. Background, I think we all pretty well know that, so pay attention to the suffer buses that have come through here, that go through to Club Getaway. There's numerous issues we've had with buses disappearing on all kinds of roads between, say, New Milford or over to New York, up to here. Back in June, Dave Schreiber and I went to New Milford to discuss this with their Board of Selectmen and Mayor Bass, and kind of came to an understanding that we needed to help together, you know, the two communities, get the buses back on the roads that could handle the size and, you know, and number and so on, issue of the bus itself. Fairly simple it seems, but to further do that, we have to put ordinances out. New Milford has gone through and placed their ordinances where the restrictions buses through Gaylord'sville, through the back roads, up South Kent Road, onto the state road, and then to Club Getaway, or anywhere else if they wanted to come up here, the town or whatever. So what we needed to do was finish up addressing the buses coming up Route 7 and going up Bull's Bridge Road, or coming down Bull's Bridge, hitting Spooner Hill, or one went up Treasure Hill a couple of weeks ago, how they got up there, I don't know. They do tend to go around. Now, within the ordinance itself, we have the definition of what a bus is, what a commercial bus is, the different sections of the state statutes that addresses what are the yellow colored school buses, and then what are the coach buses carrying schoolchildren to events occurring both at Club Getaway or in South Kent, at South Kent School. We need to address how those buses actually could get off 7, go up Bull's Bridge, and go to Kent, to South Kent School directly without having to maneuver around through town. So we did add that in there, that coach buses using, being used as school buses for schoolchildren for athletic events and athletic sponsored or school-sponsored events, which includes going to Club Getaway, a school has an outing or so on, and uses a coach bus to go to Club Getaway. They can at times be able to be on the South Kent, or excuse me, the Bull's Bridge Road directly to Club Getaway. Now mostly, we're going to put them on 7, but if something comes up and they need to use that, the roads would be available, specifically Bull's Bridge, which is a little bit bigger than any of the other roads. Along with that, as we know, when the state does close down, say 341 up in Warren to work on the pond up there, they like to shut down at our monument. That causes a problem because buses can't make that turn when the road is closed with barriers and so on. That also gives the First Selectmen the authority to waive the statute, this order, excuse me, to allow buses to use those alternate roads if that does happen. Trying to, you know, move the barriers and do that when three, four buses are coming up, or a school bus from Kent, South Kent Center School is going up somewhere else, we can, we can adjust those roads in the open and afford us to be able to allow schoolchildren back and forth and so on. And they're defined in here, the state statutes, CGS 14-275 and 281 and so on, all define what motor buses are, what school buses are, and what motor coaches are. The CGS 14-212 subsection 9 talks about commercial buses, coach buses, transferring students to student events that might occur here in Kent. It could be up to the Stone Museum, Eric Stone Museum, it could be Club Getaway, it could be up to Emory, it could be things like that, where we're allowed to nick that change. So, let's see. Okay, so in the ordinance that you all have, it brought to my attention, and I thank you, before we got going on this, that we didn't actually have the ability for the First Selectmen to suspend that. So because it wasn't in the ordinance that the Board of Selectmen passed to go to the hearing, that's why we're having, part of why we're having the meeting right afterwards, is to amend that, this ordinance, to include the statement that says that ordinance may be suspended in the event, and during closure of each or route 7, or route 341, or both, by the state of Connecticut authorities. So the state of Connecticut authorities, if they shut it down, then we can make that determination to allow alternate route for buses, talking to the schools, talking to the businesses, Club Getaway and others, and so on. So that's what we're going to add tonight, so, and so on. And it says here, "Any bus driver who violates a violation of enforcement penalty, if the terms of the ordinance shall be issued a citation by Connecticut State Police," or state troopers, excuse me, "shall be fined $250 per violation." Now ordinance in, New Milford says it's the town ordinance, it's the town police force. Our police force is our state trooper, again. So that gives them the authority, say, troopers who patrol, whether it's Patrol 1, you know, the roving patrol, or our own resident trooper has that authority, and that's how, that's why I've written that way. So in case anybody has any questions, so. Okay, I'll stop talking and open up the floor to any comments or discussions about this ordinance specifically. And please come up as usual, state your name, and, you know, anything else pertinent to your address and so on.
Thank you so much. My name is Steven Schreiber. I live up 59 South Kent Road, and I'm the owner and the operator of Club Getaway. I just want to start off by saying thank you. I'm 100% on board with this ordinance. I worked hard to get it from New Milford and to get it from Bull's Bridge, and I just want to put this on record. As what we said is that my two concern, my one concern was, and Marty, thank you for acknowledging that, is if the corner of 341 or Maple Street and Route 7 is closed, we would be isolated, and at that point, buses wouldn't get to us. No, that would be an exception. The other thing I just wanted to put on record is that 99% of our buses that are coming through town are student-sponsored events. So that they are all, you know, school-sponsored for students, and whether that be in town of Connecticut, a town in New Jersey, a town in New York, or whatever, but 99% of them are school-sponsored events. But anyway, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Anyone else from our live audience? Not, is anybody online?
Anybody online? Turn your camera on or raise your hand. Once again, does anybody want to speak to this ordinance? I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, then we'll move to the next ordinance, and it's to shall the Town of Kent adapt the code of ordinance to the Town of Kent placement, entitled "Placement of Material in Public Right-Away." Fairly straightforward. We have times in, and I go back many, many years, when I was actually following with my brother-in-law, where we did leave material in, and our public works director addressed that we needed to clear that from the road, for both the state and the town to be able to maneuver around and not be burdened with other, of the material. So I learned that lesson, understood that a long time ago. Also having to spend time here as First Selectmen and seeing the public works that's a clean air drains out all the time, when normal debris, you know, goes in the road, it's fine, but when people push their grass clippings and other debris into the road and expect that the town will pick it up, or someone else will go, and it gets into the catch basins, we do get flooding, we can have problems with that in the road. Also, just as a general courtesy, I think overall, if you're making mess, you just blow it back in and clean it up and so on. But other towns around us have had this ordinance, and so, Rick, if he has any questions, take him first, but, but it was something that we looked at over the past year or so and thought it was important enough to put on the books. Again, just to make people aware that leaving debris and general debris that they could pick up and take to somewhere to dispose of, instead of leaving it for the town to pick up, it would be a better idea. So that's really kind of the thing. It does have a penalty on that, $100 per offense, which is with the state, state allows for this. And it says, "I am the municipal officer, the First Selectmen, or agent designated by the First Selectmen, shall issue warnings and citations if we find out about it, we hear about it, whatever." But we'll always try to work it out first, address people before any clients and all that stuff. But there's appeal processes, while it goes to the Board of Selectmen, and the appeal processes, you have to let somebody know the Board of Selectmen office before, 10 days are up that you have, you know, appeal on this, and then we have 10, the board has 10 days to address that appeal, and so on. You have a hearing when you bring yourself in, and so on. There's a special situation or whatever may be happening, so. And that's, as I call it, stuff in the road right away, but it's placement of material in public right away. Any comments, or any comments on that?
Anybody online? Please put your camera on, raise your hand. Turn twice, anybody online? Okay.
All right, great, thank you. Next one is under chapter 2 of administration, it's called "Purchasing," Section 2-17. It's, it's one of the longest ones, I won't read it all. But basically, over the years, we have had a policy in the Town of Kent of our limiting our purchases without having significant RFPs and work to $10,000. We're finding out that through inflation and so on, that hitches and ball bearings in places, our public, public works vehicles often come over that. In order to move forward on that, to go through a two-week process of RFPs and so on, we think is a little bit, a little bit difficult when we get to that range. So we talked to the state, we talked to CTO2, we talked to some other towns, the state has their limit at $25,000. I also found when I was talking about it, that we can't have a policy that way, the state departments have an ordinance. So this is the ordinance we need to, need an ordinance in place to be able to limit our spending and our budgetary authorities to purchase material. So that's kind of the basis behind this. We've been operating in that for years, nobody could really determine exactly how long at the $10,000 level. State's gone up, actually did propose $35,000 increase in this year, kind of died in committee while they were working on once the many other bills that they had this year. But anyway, we've looked at the inflation rates and so on, $10,000 10 years ago is over $25,000 now, it's inflationary, but to say it. So this is, good service is greater than $20,000 in aggregate. So, you know, pulling together a bunch of materials, public works, pulling together things for the, you know, for Town Hall and so on, that gets it up and going. All this, this reminder, I think, it's all under the budgetary process that each year we pass. So you can look in each departments or each area within budget, and you see what the limit is in those areas. Now, again, when a department has a total limit or total amount, at the end of the year, if they spent or overspent or underspent or something, they can adjust that to purchase things that's needed, or purchase things they wanted. And so this just again gives them an ordinance and authority to go ahead and, for the top of the Board of Selectmen to go over. Now, the Board of Selectmen will review these, these materials, these orders, these purchases and so on. We will go into RFPs, we will do that in most cases if we can, if there's something in long term, the board will have the opportunity to say, hey, you know, we really should have an RFP on that, it's $22,000, approximately $22,000. And we can, just reading with that ordinance, be able to have that. The board still is the authority on that, so. Also, we talk about bids, when we do that in bids. In the past, we had that policy where the Board of Selectmen was in attendance at the bid openings. It's been kind of, I think, lost in some of the time, and we don't actually do that as often anymore, although we don't do a whole lot of real opening bids, we only had a couple this year. But certainly, the policy, the policy that the board can enact, and I recommended that for our last meeting, that we do that, that we do what we can do to bring the Board of Selectmen into all the bid openings, at least observe and see where, you know, larger purchases, larger areas for road construction, so on, where we're going. So you do have a better understanding of the whole aspect of where the town spends this money, and especially when we're talking about like roads construction and so on, so. And it goes in there to describe things like lowest bid is not necessarily the best bid. There has to be an explanation of why you didn't choose a lower bid, that's usually fairly evident when you open it up, but it still allows us to, it does require us now, not just the, now the ordinance requires us to have that on file for the state and the town to look at. And it gets a review of contracts, we have a lot of contracts. One of the things that we're looking, doing now within the office is gathering all the contracts we have, some are for, for small amounts, you know, Park and Rec may have a contract for a little something for law mowing. We have the, Cemetery Committee has $40,000 contracts for mowing and, you know, keeping the cemetery. So we're going to put basically a book of contracts together and have it available. So in the ordinance, it says every, within six months of a contract changing or updating or being reviewed, we can start looking at it. You're asking the department side, how's it going, what do you got going, what's your plan for that, is there a change to that? It gets, you know, again, the board a little bit more involved overall, but yet still leaving the town the ability to execute when necessary at that $25,000 instead of $10,000 above, so. And one of the things that we also had the last paragraph in there, we have buying services, you know, BJ's and Costco and so on, that's not what we work at, but one of the buying services we will, is within the cog system. The Capital Region Cog, CR cog, actually has a huge buying service, they're in the Hartford area, and they do a lot more purchases in a lot of areas, much bigger territories, they purchasing even better prices than we can in state contracts sometimes. We purchase, just like you would for BJ's or Costco or something, we purchase a partnership with them to be able to use their contract authority, state allows that, we just have to codify again, in ordinance that we are going to go and use those state regional cog to have buying services. So then there's been a couple of things we've actually, you know, gotten some stuff from the cog on, or at least we've had an ability to look at it. So that kind of, I think summarized, if anybody has read this, has any questions, please word on that one.
I don't see in there for public openings. I know most towns have bid RFP policies and they have public openings, so that the bidders can actually come, hear the bid opening, know what happened. And Kent hasn't done that, Kent doesn't do that anymore, and hasn't for years. I don't think it's professional for a couple of people to open them at their desk, just, and the contractors and everybody's flawless work into trying to prepare a bid, have no idea what happened. And my experience is getting information about what the bids were, they were being posted very nicely for a time on the Town of Kent website, every bid, past bid history, which was really nice, and that suddenly disappeared off the website, I don't know There's nothing in there about taxpayer bid allowance. I know being in the solid waste recycling business, there was a lot of towns, municipalities throughout the state, Connecticut, New York, that put in their local ordinance to try and give the local taxpaying businesses a benefit, whether it be 5% allowance or 10%, so they could be 5% or 10% within the nearest qualifying low bid, and they could be given the opportunity to get it, even though they might be slightly higher. Enforcement of the ordinance. I mean, you guys have had a bid policy, and I got to say that it's not been followed, it's been hit or miss. There's been some big projects that just got done without any sort of RFP or bid process at all. And, you know, one person picking up the phone and calling and asking a couple customer or a couple vendors for a price isn't a good use of taxpayer funds, but we deserve better. I've also requested information, because I know like, the state does have a pretty good process for buying vehicles, truck equipment, and I've questioned sometimes, because we'll buy a dump truck or whatever, and so much more than the state price, and asked for a reference. So, you know, if that's why it wasn't bid out, but then why is Kent so much higher? So I think you really need to look at all that. Thank you.
In answer to his concern about the openings, that's what you were referring to, that the Board of Selectmen can enact a policy, if we wanted to follow that, for open, opening the bids.
And again, referencing, it was a policy, not an ordinance, and therefore, but according to state, not enforceable. And so that's why we're, one of the reasons why I actually go into an ordinance, for that, one of those reasons exactly, so. Anyone?
Anyone online? Would you please turn your camera on, raise your hand, if you're interested in speaking to the purchasing ordinance proposed? Turn twice, anybody like to speak to the purchasing ordinance? Okay.
Great. Great, thank you. So our next one is the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's Section 11-16 on cannabis regulation. And I can't even read this one because it's very short. Except for medical marijuana or cannabis, dispensary facilities defined in Connecticut General Statute, CGS Section 21A 420, up Section 19, all other cannabis retail establishments defined in CGS Section 28 Alpha or 24 shall not be permitted, not be permitted in the Town of Kent, provided however, medical marijuana or cannabis products defined in CGS Section 21A 42038 may be sold in duly licensed dispensary facility at location approved by the Kent Planning and Zoning Commission. And if you pick this one up, you see the definitions that we actually went through each one of those CGS, Kent General Statutes, and the definition of what those terms were, we laid that out so I could understand them, make sure, and also the general website for the actual state statute in total, it's a long one. So a long time ago, and I know we'll hear some, that's great, not a long time, but quite a while now, we've had that issue of cannabis. And so we've had hearings within the planning and zoning, and actually cannabis subcommittee was formed to look into it. We had presentations here from cannabis experts in the field, in retail sales, the whole idea cannabis farming, full nine yards, we've had numerous, we've had numerous organizations call and talk about, you know, what is the regulations and rules in cannabis, say farming in Kent. We refer to them to planning and zoning and so on. So looking at this one, I was approached by planning and zoning, say, okay, how does Kent want to go about looking at cannabis in general? And is it just, we want to regulate it through planning and zoning, should the town have an idea to make an ordinance on, you know, retail versus medical and make sure, you know, we find what that was? We worked it out, so started looking at that, and the planning and zoning kind of gave us a deadline, asked us to please by December 30th, have something to vote before the Town of Kent. So we had five different meetings, during five different Board of Selectmen meetings, we've had people come in from the town and from others to talk about cannabis, and we really appreciate that, for some definition and understanding in a sense of kind of where we were looking to go. When we wrote, or we were presented with a draft, suggested draft ordinance from planning and zoning in the cannabis subcommittee, we looked at all, we looked at, I probably looked at 15 other towns similar to us in areas in the region about what cannabis was, how they regulated it, how they prohibited it, how they managed it, and so on. And so we went to our lawyers and said, okay, here's some ideas, and chopped it down and so on, and came up with very few straightforward paragraphs, and we had some discussion on it, it's over a meeting. So, so that's what we looked at as straightforward, the prohibition of retail cannabis, presenting that as an ordinance, based on some of the, at least what we believe were some of the results in, that we had in the survey that went out last spring, that went out for a long, long time, they had quite a few responsive, and we really appreciate everyone doing that. But we also understood medical marijuana is a different category, it's something that is medicinal in nature and publicly and widely accepted, and it should be available. So at that point, any regulation of that shouldn't be with the, with the Board of Selectmen for sure, it should rest with the planning and zoning, against their regulatory authority. So that's kind of where we are, and so I know that people wanted to speak to that, so I'll open it up. Anyone?
I just have a quick question. I mean, we have spoken about the voting mechanism.
Can you identify yourself?
I'm sorry. We haven't talked about the voting mechanism for any of these ordinances, but I think I'd like to understand what the, what that process will be for this ordinance. So if you can just speak to that, that would be good.
Sure. Again, the meeting will have, immediately following the hearing, is to look at how we set up the town meetings. Now, it's been our tradition forever to use ordinances at town meetings to pass ordinances. Now, we understand that some gain more attention and more interest than others sometimes, and some have more far-reaching repercussions, and we went through that with Lake Warm. So we looked at this, we looked at the opportunity, we looked at the, looked back at the survey that was done, and how many people actually came back and really wanted to have a chance to look at the survey, to have a chance to ask or answer questions and provide their report. So looking at that, I said, well, maybe it really, it ought to go to something bigger. Referendum would be normally where we'd go for an ordinance, but we had the opportunity about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, when planning and zoning said, yeah, could this go on the ballot? So I jumped on it and talked to our ROVs, talked to the state, we talked to our councilor, and we found out, yes, that we could put that as a question on the ballot during a general municipal election in November. So that was a great idea, because it provides both the electors, those that could vote for the offices that are being, that are being held for vote, as well as those that have a purchase, you know, or a land cost $1,000 or a grant list, property, excuse me, $1,000 or more grant, they could vote as well. The state does allow a split ballot, so to speak, so where if you came in, your elector, you would get the question, and then you get the positions that are up for election. If you're just, and we can find that as they come in, that you're a, it's a grantless person, you would get only the ballot question to be able to vote that. And that way, we'll all be calibrated and looked at just as a regular election. Gives us again, about a month or so, to get more information out, to bring more people into, you know, into the public forum and so on, and get questions and others posted, and it turns to so on. So again, it's, we're trying to look at what would be advantageous, best for the community, for the residents of Kent, to be able to speak to this question. Other questions, I think we could handle, in my opinion, and in my judgment, that the other three ordinances were more, hate to use the word boilerplate, but more of the administrative section of the town and so on, but not something that's far-reaching socially and economically and just historically, as cannabis is, you know, in the forum now. So we thought that was better, a better plan to go. And that's what I've been proposing to the board tonight, to move that question off of the town meeting, like we did with Lake Warm, when we were doing the, some of the ordinances for the fire marshal, we kind of moved those into the town meeting and then moved the ordinance for Lake Warm. And as it turned out, it was a crazy time, so. But it also gives everybody opportunities to actually, you know, have their vote counted in a more straightforward manner, I think, for this question, isn't it?
Sarah Chase, 46 Slitsworth Street, and I'm also a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And first of all, I just want to thank everybody who worked on this to this point, and under the timeline too, with the way we set from planning and zoning. I do encourage everybody to come vote, and, you know, the, what's nice about the ordinance is it's fairly clear, it's a sort of yes or no vote, and depending on what, how the tally comes out on that, that gives planning and zoning more of a clear mandate as to how we will further regulate this, the retail sales or not of both. So I think we're optimistic that we'll get a good turnout for the vote, and then that 'll sort of just help further guide planning and zoning as to what our next steps will be. And we do encourage members of the public to continue to write to us if you have concerns, if you have questions, just, you know, we were looking for as much- Just, you know, we were looking for as much feedback as we can because we know it's an important issue. And very grateful again for the first selectmen and the selectmen for all of the work that you've done on this. Thank you.
Again, just to clarify, when we talk about having material come out at this point forward, like we all, we'll have anything that's, it's said here, obviously it will be online as tonight probably, or at least by tomorrow. And so you'll be able to see that discussion, you can look at it, talk to it and so on and make decisions on the ordinance as it's proposed. With a vote on it.
Yes, it's a little different, but we have time where if there are more material that were presented and sent forward to the town, we will put that in folders in town, like we did with the Lake Worm, that had over 600 different
products that were produced and have online by the time we got finished, you know, with the Lake Worm. So again, a repository, we'll make sure we get that out there. We'll communicate with the town on this question and other things as we go forward. So. Yes.
Matthew Starr again, resident from tax court. So would the first three not be on the, at the November vote?
Correct. That's the proposal, yes.
I just wonder, being in the last ordinance that got passed where it was like, I think 1% or less of the taxpayers and candidate voting on ordinances. I really think this board needs to push to have some sort of a quorum, you know, to pass these things with a room of, number one, there's, half the people have that interest already in it. Why not put them all out there to get a good population to read them and vote on them? You know, there might not be a lot of people here tonight, but I know a lot of guys that mow lawns and throw snow and, you know, that ordinance about streets and sidewalks. That affects them. That affects how they do their business. And, you know, you got to remember, they're pushing snow out of driveways that the town pushed in or the state pushed in. So, and then some, some of the driveways are very limited what to do. And so they won't even know about this ordinance. You know, they're probably busy working, you know, if you mow the wrong way with your mower and you blow grass in the road, is somebody gonna, I didn't realize it was such a big issue in Kent. I hadn't heard anything. Bruce Adams was the last selectman I heard even mention it. I follow all the board of selectman meetings very closely and I haven't heard it discussed till till just now. So I don't even know where that came from.
We talked.
You talk about it a lot?
We talked about it at our meetings and we had to, because we had to advance it.
I understand to form this ordinance, but I never recall hearing the road foreman or anyone complaining that there is a problem. Or bringing it to the board of selectmen and the board of selectmen saying, hey, we've got a problem. Because normally, I mean, unless it's a huge problem, I would think it just handled by a letter from the board of selectmen or the administrative assistant or the road foreman, letting them know, somebody know. A lot of residents don't do their own snow plowing. So you know, who's liable when you don't know who's the plower? Somebody from the highway department reports a problem. You give them 10 days notice for the resident to respond or pay the fine. And will it be enforced across the board the same? Anyways, I'd like to see those three, all four, all of them on the ballot instead of why hold a special meeting to do three and not just add all four to the to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. People online?
Does anybody online want to speak? Like Joe Agley, unmute yourself, Joe. Try again. You didn't unmute.
Sarah Chase. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. Can I circle back to that third ordinance, the one about the purchasing? And so if the, if the threshold for purchasing is being raised for, for the board of selectmen, how, how does this affect the board of finance? Are you, are you taking away some of their, their purchasing power? Like, because they control the power of the purse strings?
No, board of finance you're talking about, Joe?
Yes.
So, you know, they, they recommend the budget as comes in and questioned on, they have questions on specific stuff, but everything that was purchased, it will be within the budgetary confines of the budget every year. You're not going to allow people to go and have, you know, buy something that they, they aren't within their purchasing authority to do within the departments and so on. So this does not take out the board of finance. Finance doesn't deal with individual purchases. They deal with the overall budget and the financial future and organization between the board of education and the town, Kent.
So this, Marty, this would, what you're referring to would just be like interdepartmental purchases?
It could be, well, that, well, that interdepartmental, it could be townwide. I mean, something like what we're doing, what we did with, well, that's, yeah. It could be something like tile for the town or say carpeting or something that comes in at $15,000 or something like that. And, and we, you know, we don't have to go to a formal bid if we, if we know that $15,000 is the best price around and we've queried everyone else. And all that would be public as requested. That stuff would be reviewed in the overall by the board of selectmen and so on. But yeah, it gives, it gives a threshold. Like I said, we've had the 10,000 threshold as a policy, as a policy for 14 to 15 years more. I mean, that's since Joyce came in, that's the last, if you can remember it changing, it was 10,000 when she came in, she spent here 14 years. I couldn't find anything that actually stated exactly when it started, but that policy had been in a force for quite a while. But again, when we looked at it and just started looking at, at cost of buying things as inflation came up, as supply chains tightened, you know, material is backordered and so on. And to be able to bid or get something that would actually keep the town running, the numbers started climbing and it was consistently climbing. So talking to the state, they said, well, then, you know, you could look to excuse me, improve your, your bottom line from 10 to 15 to 20,000, 25,000. We think 25,000 is a good amount. And that's, we did, but we had to have an ordinance. It gets, it gets down back to a policy was not, gave us, was not a good authority for us to work under. It had to be state policy or state ordinance, excuse me, or an ordinance by the state, recognized by the state.
So just so I understand this correctly, because there was an example that was used earlier for some kind of a vehicle, fire truck or something about purchasing that. So would that be an example of being able for, for the board to use that power to purchase, say, a vehicle?
Yeah, it could. Yeah, it, it could be used if it was like $15,000 or, or something along that nature. If it was, you know, in the plan and discussed by the board to actually look at the purchasing of it, yeah, it could be. Or within the authority of the town, under its budgetary authority to actually go do that, could. But the, the plan again is to, and to involve the public more in understanding what our bids are. Exactly how we bid, how we, what contracts we actually have, I should say, not just bids, but all the contracts we have, like, so we're gaining and collecting all the contracts. It's $200 contract for something online. It may be $15,000 for our town website, which is around that. That's kind of the price we pay every year. So if we go renew that every year or we renew a point sale for parks and rec or we renew a point of sale for a transfer station and it's 8, 10,000, $15,000, then we need to be able to, you know, look at those, at those costs. And the town also ought to look at what contracts we're, you know, engaging in. So that they know exactly how we're doing it and then they can review it. And then allow, again, the board to attend in public, to attend bid openings on anything major that, that we're looking at, which would be, you know, bigger trucks. Obviously, they're, $25,000 isn't going to buy you much of a truck nowadays. But certainly large scale bids for, say, doing a road, working on a road, something that, you know, that we have replacements of material. We did that when we did the, we didn't have the public bid, but we were under a different policy. When we're redoing, starting Monday, this room and its Zoom capabilities, it's online capability, which we know is, has been difficult to manage for the past couple of years. We actually went out and bided that and then bid the price down and actually negotiated for better pricing. So that we could get this up to speed with the better kind of microphones, better, you know, audio and systems, anything like that. So that's, that was bid out because it was over, it was 40,000 some dollars, $44,000, I think it's in that range.
But Marty, for clarification, this ordinance, we would have to go out to bid at $25,000.
$25,000, right, correct.
You were using $8,000 figure, which is kind of.
Right. And that's kind of, well, that's, but that's one of the, yeah, okay, good point. Thank you. We're finding that where we used to get things eight, 9,000, now it's 15,000. So with the policy we had, we were going to run ourselves, yeah, as we discussed. We run ourselves in violation of that, but policy couldn't hold it. We need an ordinance so that we can refine it and then along with that, you know, open bids and so on. Yes. But anything 25 or over, it would be actually, yeah, going to bid 25 and over. Thank you.
Any other questions? Online?
Okay, that was the last, open it again, back here again.
Matthew Starr again. That's Joe, brought up a good point. Taxpayer funded equipment to other agencies. I don't see that in the purchasing. There should be something in there as well. So if the taxpayers are being taxed for, say, a fire truck, $800,000 fire truck. There should be a requirement with the funding that there's a public bid. And those records are maintained by the town, you know, unlike what happened last time. There was no bid process. That's why I said there, there is no, it doesn't say anything in here about how it's going to be enforced. And it's been a ongoing problem that.
Is that another thing that we can handle by policy or can the board of selectmen not dictate to the fire department how the trucks are procured?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a good point.
It's not just the fire department, it's taxpayer funds. If you're dispersing taxpayer funds, those funds, if they're over a certain amount, should all be subject to the town's ordinance. There should be something in here that says, you know, taxpayer funds, you know, because you give taxpayer funds to the sewer commission to anyone, you know, and it should all be through the town account. There should be a, on the website, you pull up, you can see all the bids that were done and the results of such. It would stop all the questions the residents may have about how their money's spent.
Thank you. Any other questions about any of the other ordinances, any or all of the ordinances? Okay, hearing done. I declare the town hearing. The ordinance is closed as of 7:45 PM. So we will take one minute to transition out for, before we start our special board of selected meetings. So you're all welcome to.
All welcome to hang out. We understand if you want to leave.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your work on this.
Okay.
I guess I have to pin us too.
Man, everybody just left.
Everybody ready to go?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I don't have to do anything, right?
Still recording?
Yeah, I didn't stop.
Yeah, can you pause it? Good. Okay, I'm hereby call the special board of selectmen meeting for September 18th, 2025, which was to start immediately after the public hearing via Zoom in large meeting to order at 7:46 PM. Okay. First is to review, edit and acceptance of the ordinances for, for it. So the first, the one I'd like to bring up is, is a modification to the streets and sidewalks restriction of commercial bus traffic to add a sentence to the exception paragraph. The sentence would read, this ordinance may be suspended in the event of and during the closure or detour of Route 7 or Route 341 or both by state of Connecticut authorities, period.
So I make a motion, I make a motion to amend the restriction of commercial bus travel ordinance to include that line.
I will second that.
Okay, you can second. You can second that. Okay, any more, any discussion? So as we said, it was to, you know, preclude shutdown, will we get one, when somebody's working up on 341, it doesn't affect, actually, South Kent Road off of 341. You get to Club Getaway or other, even up to South Kent, because we saw this summer how that interrupted. So I did talk this over with our lawyer and this is the ordinance in a language that he recommends after looking at it and so on. So I think that's, that's good to go. And it's good that we heard from
David.
That David, concerning the amount of actual school sponsored buses he has, he does have.
That means if it's a school sponsored bus, it can go on both.
It could. Yeah, it can be suspended for that. Yeah, directly. Right, exactly.
Be a lot of buses still on both.
Well, but we do have, that's part where we're getting with the state and with, with New Milford to actually put up the signage and so on. We'll keep it, unless something goes up, we'll keep it coming up seven to 341. We can, we can do that with signage. And then if something comes up, we can let the buses, okay, then you're permitted to go there and so on. But there will be some, with South Kent, just because of the school where it's located, it's kind of tough to drag them all the way up down and we certainly don't want them through Galerhill. And what I do understand, since the ordinance and the buses and Google Earth or somebody, one of the GIS companies have put in their thing, bus restriction, no bus crap allowed.
Oh, cool. That's great.
So Rick and I will be talking to the, the New Milford Public Works guys and working on all that. Yeah, right?
You say.
We're done. Wow. Okay.
Do we vote? I think we need to vote.
We did, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Now we need to set a town meeting on Thursday, October 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. That's the statutory time limit for the town meeting. I think we described that before. And so we'll do that as a vote to set that time and date at town meeting at, here at town hall. So I'll make a, I'll make a motion to set the town, the town meeting for Thursday, October 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM at town hall.
Do we have to say specifically which ordinances or is that part of the agenda?
The next one, yeah. Yeah, we'll prove the agenda, we'll discuss each other.
Okay. Second.
A discussion on the time and date, location.
The Thursday, October 2nd at 7 o'clock?
Correct.
Okay, I'll be on Zoom again.
Okay, all right.
Do we, are we going to have Zoom?
No, we won't have Zoom for the town meeting. So, but
there's no voting over Zoom.
Right, yeah, we don't do that in Zoom. Right. But as long as we have, well, town meeting too, we have the quorum. So you'll be there, right? Yeah, be there.
So it starts at 7. How long will this be, do you think? This is.
It's a town meeting, you know, maybe discussions of the, of the, whatever ordinances we put out in town meeting.
I could, I could be there, I think. Yeah, I, I'll make that work. I'll be there.
Okay, great.
My guess is less than an hour because this hearing took less than an hour.
I'll make it work.
All right, then all in favor of the motion to set a town meeting on Thursday, October 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM at town hall?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Prove that. Okay, now the agenda, prove the agenda for the Thursday, October 2nd town meeting. And I would like to present the where did I go with that?
So this agenda that's in the meeting folder includes cannabis.
Right, I had the other one, here we go. Okay, well, we can, we can modify, that's what you have. Okay, well, we can, we can, that's what we have.
But that, that's a little problematic because, I mean, this is what people saw.
Well, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. This is the, this is the, the ordinances we brought forward from the town meeting, which is what we have to do, right? Bring the, all the ordinances came forward. I'm going to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen make a call to remove code of ordinance of the Town of Kent, Section 11-16, Regulation of Cannabis, vote number four from the Thursday, October 2nd, 2025 town meeting agenda to the Tuesday, November 4th, 2025 election ballot.
Second.
Any comments?
I mean, I, I understand the comments that were made at the hearing tonight, but I really think this is the one that people care the most about. And it would, I think it makes sense to have it on the ballot and have the ability to, you know, have, have an absentee ballot to vote on it.
Exactly, which we allow it to, that's good, it's time, I didn't mention that, you're right. But, yeah, for any of those still hearing and those who are listening and so on, this now that being able to do this and make the motion to remove the cannabis ordinance to a vote allows for mail out ballots, collecting absentee ballots, excuse me, requesting through mail and so on, allows us to all do that, starting almost next week, I think it is. Part of the issue is too, is that in order for us to certify the state ballot, or the ballot to the state, we have to do that by the 19th, so it has to be done by tomorrow. So it does give us tonight, which kind of stars align, to be able to move this one to the town vote. And I agree with you for the same reason. This is, this is the New England town meeting. If we want to change that schedule to, to vote, then I think it's a greater discussion in the town. But right now, we have that, that ability to do that and we have the ability to actually pull things off for a greater referendum or vote. And this, again, gave us the opportunity to put it on as a ballot note and so on, so.
Ballot question.
Ballot question, excuse me, yeah.
So the, the document that people are going to see after tonight is going to not have number four on it, right? Okay.
Correct, and we'll sign that. And I have the, we have the adjusted town meeting agenda here that, that we will sign that took cannabis off, if we vote on it, if we agree it, it has the other three on there, so. So, yeah. Okay. All right. All in favor then?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, now the question on the ballot, we have to just approve the question on the ballot. The question about is very simple, it says, "Shall the Town of Kent adopt Code of Ordinance of the Town of Kent, Section 11-16, entitled Regulation of Cannabis?" Question mark. Do we, you know, do they want that ordinance? If they don't, vote it down and as stated in the comments in the hearing, we can go back and Plan and Zoning, go back and relook at, at how they move this. But again, we addressed the retail side and I think the medical side, which was questions that we, we seem to hear coming up. So anyway, and people get to make decisions. And as, you know, again, as we saw with other ordinances and referendums, if we get more material, we'll have it online and I'll send notes out every now and then about updates on, you know, if you want to go back and look at some of the arguments, both back and forth studies, whatever it is that we do get, we'll put that out, so. Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion to place the question on the ballot as follows. Shall the Town of Kent adopt Code of Ordinance of the Town of Kent, Section 11-16, entitled Regulation of Cannabis? Question mark.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, great. Public comment?
Do we have, wait, do we have to vote on the agenda itself? Or we, the vote that we did to take off four was for the whole.
No, we do, we, yeah, you're right, we have to go back and. Sorry, I'll judge, we have to go back, yep, so backup one.
Okay.
So, yeah, we got that, okay. So now that we've approved that and proved the ballot question and so on, the Town of Kent, the town meeting agenda, it'll be held on October 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. I'll read this as we go. "The electors and those qualified to vote in a town meeting of the Town of Kent are hereby warned and notified that the town meeting of the Town of Kent will be held on Thursday, October 2nd, 2027, 2020, 2025, excuse me, at 7:00 PM at Kent Town Hall, 41 Kent Green Boulevard, to consider and act upon the following agenda. Number one, shall the Town of Kent adopt Code of Ordinance of the Town of Kent, Section 11-17, entitled Restriction of Commercial Bus Travel? Question two, shall the Town of Kent adopt the Code of Ordinance of the Town of Kent, Section 17-10, entitled Placement of Material in Public Right of Way? Number three, shall the Town of Kent adopt the Code of Ordinance of the Town of Kent, Section 2-17, entitled Purchasing Ordinance? For ordinances published by summary, Connecticut General Section 7-157 Bravo provides that the town clerk, town clerk, we shall make a copy of such full text of any ordinance available for public inspection and shall upon request make available a copy of such ordinance to any person requesting a copy. A full copy of the aforementioned ordinance is available during regular office hours, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and Friday, 9:00 AM to noon, and at the following website, which is HTTPS Town of Kent Home News Town Meeting Notice. The aforementioned ordinance adopted at a town meeting held on Thursday, October 2nd, 2025 shall become effective 15 days after publication in a newspaper circulating in the Town of Kent. Any disabled person requesting special assistance should contact Martin Lindemeyer for Selectment for ADA coordination at 860-927-4627 or at firstselectment@townofkentct.gov. And this is at least five days prior to the meeting, a date of this 18th day of September, 2025." So.
There's a typo, it needs to say the aforementioned ordinances, it needs to be.
Oh, I have a second, yeah, ordinance, yeah. Sorry, you're right?
Sure.
Thank you, it'll break down, yeah, it was ordinances that were published. Thank you. Okay, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the town meeting agenda.
With the correction.
Small correction.
Right, okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We got to get you to come in and sign this too.
I'll come in tomorrow.
Okay, I'll be here.
Thank you, Glenn.
Yeah, thanks, Glenn, okay. Again, I think this time we're in public comment. Anyone online?
Anybody online want to speak? Please raise your hand, turn your camera on.
Okay, hearing done, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep.